Wednesday, October sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, regular board work session, the Gresham Barlow Board of Education. Role call, we show it all in attendance when we get to that, so I'll call everybody out. Chris Howitt, Chair, Kathy Keaton, Vice Chair, Blake Peterson, Director, David Liggett, Director, Holly Regan, Director, Dr. Myra Gomez, Director, Dr. Sean Barnes, Director, and Superintendent James Hoo. With their meeting, the forum first item would be to approve the meeting and to ask for any changes to it. So, is our motion to approve this?
I move to approve the meeting, I may have to present. Second.
Move second, Blake. Any other discussion? Moved by David, seconded by Blake, all those in favor? Any opposed? All right, we have an agenda. First thing up, Mr. Cook, Policy Review, first reading.
Thank you, Chair. The Policy Committee met about two weeks ago and they are forwarding five policies for you to review tonight. And I want to, I'm coming from our operating agreement from last year. I'm not going to go in detail about what the committee's discussing, but if you have questions, please ask. Because I'm just assuming that you've had a chance to read them before. So, the first one presented is cybersecurity executive director Gibbs saw that we had a hole in our policies. We hadn't had a cybersecurity policy before. So, he did some research with other districts and other tech coordinators in the region. And this is the policy that he forwarded to the committee for consideration. So, the committee agreed with the policy and is forwarding it to you all. Any questions on it? We will move forward to the next, and we can always come back to it if you want. Reporting as suspected child abuse is a lot of cleanup. This was OSBA's recommendation, or not recommendation, it's a required policy revision this year. One of the changes that the committee elected to make where it says elected in charter, that was repeated over and over again throughout the policy. So, made a note at the bottom or made a note up top, I can't remember where we made the note. They told me on that. Oh, yeah, there it is, elected includes elected in charter, so they could take out those redundancies of words. But that's really any, all the corrections that can committee made to this policy. If there are no questions, I will keep moving forward to sexual harassment was forwarded as well. It is also a great deal of cleanup, reflected a bit of change with some Title IX changes this year. One of the biggest changes was number three on page, at the top of page two. All of that language that is struck is actually now included as footnote right below. So, it didn't leave, it's just down the bottom. So, is all of these? Oh, I get it, nevermind, I saw them, I didn't see the consent there. Okay. The next policy, and like I said, we can keep coming back to these, is paving into it here. Is sexual harassment, and this is student version. So, there's a staff of student version, both, they're almost mirror images of each other, just one's written more around student sexual harassment. The other one is adult. But they are, it's a virtual recipe of the first policy.
I don't remember asking this in the Policy Committee, but why do they have to separate those up? You know?
We, there's always been, so I don't have an answer about the history because it's always just been this way for me, I've never asked. But there's always been student and adult policy separated in the handbook, so I'm assuming that's.
And they're both cross-referenced, each one has, so someone only knows one.
They can go through that.
See the.
The stuff I put in green, you said was the, what's the stuff like?
The purple and red come from OSBA. The green was, we noticed that there were, like, yeah, revisions needed.
It was the wrong order, it was, it went like.
The numbers were out of order, so we corrected that.
So, John, can you just do for, you guys remember that David, what OSBA provides for, subscription to the state?
OSBA provides a legal resource and they, they'll revise policies for us. They will pay attention to what the legislature and laws have changed, so they know what policies are required. Or for the board to consider for updating. They also give us highly recommended policies. If we have questions as a policy committee, we can always refer back to their legal counsel of, if we don't understand this or we need more information on this, they'll respond and give us their opinion. The board is always still permitted to act as the board, but they are legal resources.
And a few years ago, we did a full policy update, whole policy rewrite, just to make sure that we were current. Because that protects us in case of, of legal activity or policies are current, then you can face additional employee policies are outdated.
Yes. And there was a time, this is maybe ten, fifteen years before, we were very out there. We didn't have a good process, we've had a pretty solid process for a long time. The last policy moving forward is reporting suspected abuse of child. When it comes to substantive changes, there aren't any, doesn't really change our practice. We report whenever we feel the need to report, that training is still the same, but there's some language cleanup in here.
More than important charter, elected in charter.
Yeah. On the subject of just language cleanup, sorry, this is missing that any board member, I think, I think a plural should be eliminated.
Oh, I agree.
But we took out the elected and.
Do you see, do you see another spot there where it should be?
I see it on page two of four. Probably on the first one.
In the, yeah, the second, also, we just reviewed it, done the same thing. And it does it in line one, in line six.
So, we've taken note of that, and I'll ask the committee, that's forwarded to the business meeting with that understanding that that be correct?
Yeah. And there is one place with the stay, but in that first paragraph, it doesn't exist.
Yeah. We will work with Sarah and Cindy on that, and that's how we forward it. Any objection to moving these policies forward to the business meeting?
Right, so they will be on the agenda when we get into the business. If any other questions come up afterwards, Mr. Cook. And we'll see whether or not.
Thank you all.
If there's any question? All right, so next up is the information item, the City of Gresham Enterprise Zone presentation. And different than a queue, are you going to use this?
Yes, thank you, Chair. So, enterprise zones are an economic development tool used by local governments to incentivize investments via temporary property tax. Being House Bill two thousand and nine, that was passed. When you can free modify the enterprise zone program to allow school districts to recruit a portion of the abated property tax revenues setting the school support fee to three to apply in years four and five, any new extended enterprise zone agreement. Local governments can no longer offer an extended abatement without a school support fee. We overlook this district. So, we have representative from the Division for the City, Erica Fitzgerald, who's here along online with BSD, mental liaison, and also supports all of our East County School Districts, Stacy Michelson. And they're going to do a joint presentation on enterprise zones. And I think they'll present some information, and certainly if you have questions, feel free to go ahead and, and ask the questions as they.
I can start?
Or Stacy or Erica?
Yeah, I think actually, Erica, it probably makes sense if I go kind of first with the big picture overview. Sarah, do you want me to do my own screen share?
I want to share your screen, that way you can look through the slides as you want it. And I did attach it, so the board also has access to see those slides too.
Okay. Okay, give me just one moment to make sure I am sharing my screen appropriately here. There we go. Okay, oh, see that okay? Okay, great, thank you. So, yeah, thank you Superintendent Hugh and Chair Howitt. For those I haven't had the pleasure of meeting, Superintendent Hugh said, I'm Stacy Michelson. I provide government relations services for all of our districts in, in East Multnomah County. And I've coordinated with Erica to kind of give a high level overview on enterprise zones and some of the changes from House Bill two thousand and nine. And then she'll provide a little bit more of that local context that's really specific to the city of Gresham and Gresham Barlow. So, first of all, Superintendent Hugh said enterprise zones are a local economic development tool that have been in place in Oregon since nineteen eighty-five. Essentially, our local government entities are able to designate a region experiencing, excuse me, economic hardship as an enterprise zone. Those zones get designated for up to ten years at a time, and then they can be re-designated for an additional ten years on an ongoing basis. So, you may have areas that are designated as an enterprise zone for a short term amount of time. And then some that are enterprise zones on a really ongoing sort of imperperity basis, but that designation is always on a rolling ten year period. And so, what an enterprise zone is, is it is a space where the local government sponsor of the zone can work in partnership with businesses located within the zone who are interested in making new investments. So, that may be a company that is interested in coming into that area for the first time and purchasing new land or building a new construction. It could also be an existing business that's looking at expansion. So, if there's an additional investment being made, it allows the local zone sponsor to provide a property tax abatement to that entity when certain criteria are met. And so, that would be the incentive, right, for that, that firm to come in and make that investment. There are currently seventy-three enterprise zones across Oregon. Most of those are rural, eighteen of them are urban. For today's purposes, I'm going to focus on urban zones. There are some distinctions in terms of length of property tax abatement and things like that between urban and rural, but yeah, we'll just focus on urban. But here is a map that does show sort of the geographic spread of enterprise zones. So, all of those blue dots are going to be rural zones, the red dots are going to be urban zones. So, really for the urban primarily located along the I five corridor and then over in Bend area as well. So, the criteria for an enterprise zone, I want to name that a standard agreement is for a three-year property tax abatement. And that accounts for the majority of agreements that we see statewide currently. So, the requirements for a business that's going to sign that agreement are around a certain level of additional jobs created. And it can't, you know, you can't be creating jobs in one area and then laying off in another part of the state. So, it has to be sort of a net gain overall, excuse me. Requirements to work with local employment departments and WorkSource Oregon on, you know, job creation, the folks that are actually getting hired being from the community. And then satisfying additional criteria set by the zone sponsor in our, in our urban regions. So, a small portion of the agreements are for what we call extended abatement. And that can be a four-year agreement or a five-year agreement. And for those cases, the local zone sponsors may have additional criteria that they set that the business would have to meet. In areas outside of Portland and Salem, there are some very specific wage rates relative to median income that have to be met. And then what we'll really be focusing on today is that middle bullet of that bottom portion of the slide there, that there has to be an agreed upon school support fee between the district and the enterprise zone that gets paid to the school district in years four and five of an, of an evaded agreement. And that's really new as of House Bill two thousand and nine. So, what we saw from House Bill two thousand and nine, which passed in two thousand and twenty-three, and I will acknowledge that the bill itself does a number of things. But I'm focusing today just on this specific component of the bill. So, again, in order for a local enterprise zone sponsor and a business to enter into anything other than a standard three-year in agreement, there has to be a local school support fee that is decided. It's framed as between the district and the zone sponsor, but it's really up to the district to set that rate. And it needs to be somewhere between fifteen and thirty percent. What's been established in OARs is that you can go smack dab in the middle and set a school support fee of twenty-two and a half percent. Or if you want to go on either end of that, then it needs to be a whole percentage. Bit arbitrary, but that's, that's where they landed on that. And so, then how that would work is in years four and five of the property tax abatement period, the business firm would pay that portion of their abated property tax to the school district. And so, that will be, the property tax that's abated is not the entire property tax that that business would owe. It is just on their additional new investment. And then what you would be receiving as a school district would be, again, what, fifteen to thirty percent of the entire amount of property tax that would be abated. So, it's not just a portion of what the district itself would have otherwise received, but a portion of the entire property tax that's being abated. If you want to name, the exemption begins once the property is placed in service, which may take some time, and Erica can describe a little bit more in detail and with a little bit more expertise exactly what that looks like. But just want to be clear, it's not as simple as a zone sponsor and a business sign an agreement and then four years later, the school district would be receiving this fee. There is, there is a period when those investments are taking place. And then once the district, once the business rather, is actually considered in service, that's when the property tax abatement begins. And so, it would be four, five, in years four and five, from the beginning of the property tax abatement period. So, once that happens, the zone sponsor is responsible for providing the school district with any information needed in order to invoice whatever businesses would be subject to that school support fee. By November first of the year, districts are expected to get those invoices out by December first with payments coming in no later than December thirty-first. And what's important for you all to know is that any local revenue collected as part of this process would be counted as local revenue for purposes of the state school fund equalization distribution. So, I just want to name Gresham overlaps, Gresham Barlow overlaps with a single enterprise zone. We have three that are in East County, so there's an East Portland enterprise zone, there's the Gresham enterprise zone, and then there's a Columbia Cascade enterprise zone. So, some of our districts touch multiple enterprise zones. And for example, the Gresham enterprise zone, excuse me, overlaps with three school districts, right, Reynolds, Centennial, and Gresham Barlow. So, each of these local school support fees is negotiated very specifically between the enterprise zone and the overlapping school district. So, it is possible that you could have an enterprise zone with different school support fees based on the district and what they set. I don't think that's likely, but it is possible. So, as we look at the map for Gresham, I believe you can all see my cursor tracking here. These blue lines are not terribly helpful, but this blue line that I'm tracing here is the Gresham Barlow School District boundary. So, the portions of the Gresham enterprise zone that fall within your district's boundaries would be this section here, the entirety of this section up here. And then there is this other piece that is actually split three ways between Reynolds, Centennial, and Gresham Barlow. So, in terms of implementation statewide, again, this change just took place in two thousand, sorry, twenty twenty-three. So, eight zones and school districts have set a rate across the state. Most of those have, sorry, there are eight zone sponsors that have set the rates. That accounts for roughly a sixth of all of the zones. At the Business Oregon level, who is the entity that oversees enterprise zones, they don't know of any areas that have set a rate beyond that minimum fifteen percent. That seems to be pretty popular, and that's been true in our area as well thus far. Both Centennial and Park Rose have set rates at fifteen percent, and that's done through a school board resolution. So, for your purposes, the city of Gresham has said that they are willing to handle the invoicing on behalf of the district. They've provided a draft IGA that can be shared out with a small admin fee to do that work. The district would be responsible for any refunds of overpayments that a business might make. And I know one of the questions that I've heard from some districts is, well, what if a business, you know, just refuses to pay? And then we're potentially getting shorted in terms of local revenue that we're expected to be bringing in. And so, there are some teeth built in there where failure to pay on behalf of the business benefiting from the property tax abatement may result in them being disqualified from the program altogether. So, there are some teeth there. And that's, that's sort of the big picture overview of enterprise zones and this new impact of House Bill two thousand and nine. Again, the enterprise zones themselves have existed for a number of years, but there was recent legislation that changes the relationship between our school districts and our enterprise zones. And so, that's really kind of why we're, why we're just now having these conversations and why this is coming up for the first time. So, with that, I will let Erica go on. I'll just say that in the slides you have, there are a few extra resources there that provide a little bit more information for anyone who wants to really geek out on enterprise zones and what that looks like exactly.
All right, thank you, Stacy. No questions, are there any questions for Stacy before I?
I just had a question on the map, Stacy. Are there two zones that are in Gresham Barlow School District? Because there's the one that you pointed to, and then there's the one that's down off of Redner Road down by Springwater. Is that out of our set down two and a.
Two and a quarter.
Two and a quarter.
Yeah.
There's two full pieces and then one portion.
And then the little point, okay.
Yeah, those are all part of the same stuff.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I should have said the one at the top and then the little piece. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, well, good evening, Chair Howitt, Vice Chair, people and school board members. I'm Erica Fitzgerald, interim Economic Development Manager with the city of Gresham. Thanks very much for having me here tonight to give you some background on the enterprise zone. The Gresham Enterprise Zone was created in March two thousand and six and was re-designated for an additional ten years in twenty sixteen. The zone covers six distinct areas within the city which encompass industrial zone. The enterprise zone program encourages investment and family wage job creation for qualifying companies located within the boundaries of the zone. To qualify for the program, a company must be in the trade sector, meaning that they produce, process, or assemble a product which is primarily sold outside the local economy. An approved enterprise zone company receives a property tax abatement on new qualified investments for three to five. As Stacy's mentioned, the existing improvements in the land are taxed normally and do not receive that. The enterprise zone has several state and local criteria, several of which Stacy went through, but I'll talk about it in a little bit more detail for our local criteria. And companies must meet these in order to qualify and maintain their abatement over the course of, of the, the period. So, the Gresham Enterprise Zone program has been a successful tool since its inception in two thousand and six. To date, twenty-one companies have taken advantage of the program, resulting in over a billion dollars in new investment and the creation of hundreds of family wage jobs. The logos on this slide represent companies within the Gresham Barlow School District boundary that have used the Gresham Enterprise Zone program. These projects alone have created millions of dollars in capital investment and have resulted in the creation of hundreds of family wage jobs. Eligible companies must meet all state and local program criteria to receive the abatement. These criteria include investing more than a million dollars, increasing employment by ten percent, entering into a first source hiring agreement with WorkSource Oregon to post all open positions with our local workforce providers, signing a tax abatement contract with the city, paying a community service fee to the city in years four and five of the abatement period, and participating in at least one activity in each of the following workforce development categories. Youth engagement, career advancement opportunities, local hiring, and business to business. In terms of direct impacts of House Bill two thousand and nine, the Gresham Enterprise Zone program, companies requesting a five-year extended abatement through the program will be required to pay the school support fee in years four and five of the abatement to the impacted school district in their tax code area. Companies also pay the city of Gresham a community service fee in years four and five of the abatement. So, with this fee, companies will receive a hundred percent property tax abatement for years one through three, and then a forty-five to sixty percent property tax abatement in years four and five. Companies will pay the twenty-five percent community service fee and then either a fifteen to thirty percent school support fee as set by. Community service fees have been used to support a wide range of projects in the city, including infrastructure improvements to facilitate development at Gresham Vista Business Park, Mechatronics Program at Mountain Community College, and many other projects that benefit the Gresham community. The city currently has one pending enterprise zone application located within the boundaries of the Gresham Barlow School District for microchip technology. Microchip Technology of Gresham Semiconductor Fabrication Company has been undergoing significant investments at their Gresham facility located on. These investments include upgrades to the current building and new machinery and equipment to accommodate the evolving technology of the semiconductor industry. Microchip received over seventy million dollars in federal chips funding and eleven million dollars in state chips funding to support their road expansion. Microchip's current application for the enterprise zone program is pending and cannot be completed until the enterprise zone school support fee is adopted by the Gresham Barlow School Board. Final authorization of the Microchip enterprise zone application will provide Microchip with the certainty and confidence that the community is in full support of their ongoing expansion in the city of Gresham. The company employs over nine hundred people, many of which live in the East Multnomah County community, making them one of the biggest employers in Gresham. They provide family wage jobs and offer their employees strong career pathways and opportunities for growth within the company. Microchip is a strong partner with the Gresham Barlow School District and other local districts in participation in career development events and opportunities. Microchip is also a strong partner with Mountain Community College through their support for the Mechatronics Program for which they continuously hire employees. Microchip is committed to working closely with the K H twelve school districts and area community colleges to build their future workforce pipeline. Through the enterprise zone program, Microchip will be required to meet multiple workforce development requirements, including ongoing engagement with the youth in Gresham community. Microchip is a critical part of the Gresham business community and regional semiconductor ecosystem. Their focus and dedication to community partnerships in the Gresham area is integral to our efforts to create career pathways for Gresham students. And I did see Microchip's plaque up on the wall, I know that they were really instrumental in how and have worked with them very close. The process for this school support fee requires that school boards adopt a fee between fifteen and thirty percent of total abated property tax. The city of Gresham as enterprise zone sponsor then adopts resolutions to acknowledge the school support fees for all impacted school district. The city of Gresham can then invoice the school support fee on behalf of the school districts via the intergovernmental agreement that Stacy mentioned. Once the zone sponsor receives the annual property tax data from the county, invoices will then be sent to companies using the enterprise zone program in years four and five of their tax abatement period, and the school support fee will then be passed on to the district. We don't anticipate collection of the school support fee until two thousand and twenty-eight, given the timing of pending applications. And I also just wanted to comment on, on one of the bullets from Stacy's presentation about if, if the company fails to pay that school support fee and they just qualify from the enterprise zone program, they then will obviously no longer receive additional tax abatement, but they will have to pay back all abated taxes. So, all of that property tax revenue would come back to all the taxing districts in the case that a company didn't pay their. So, that concludes my presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you want.
So, years one through three, they're not paying any. That's what the, that's what they get out, right?
Yeah, and that's a new investment that is in service after that.
Four and five, they're paying anywhere from fifteen to thirty percent to the schools, which would be the desired one, that percentage.
Yes.
Let's say it's fifteen percent.
Yeah, it, that's really hard to estimate because just based on what the investment for that particular company is. So, I mean, we could run some really rough estimates based on a specific investment, but it's hard to do that because the abatement is all based on how the county assesses the property, and it's very hard to predict that, especially.
Are we talking hundreds of thousands, are we talking like?
In, it'll be in the thousands. Yeah.
Just, just so you know, we get the state school fund, right? But if we get any local revenue, that money is then diminished. And so, we're actually not getting any money and probably getting less because they're doing an administrative fee, which reduces the amount that we get.
It just changes who we get it from.
It just changes who we get it from and probably less because they take part of that as an administrative. It just changes who we get it from and probably less because they take part of that as an administrative.
So this is a, you may or may not know the answer to this, but it, it's, the Enterprise Zone currently works within the city, years one through three, tax abatements, all within your purview. Why didn't they just extend, allow you to extend it? Why did they have to involve the school district when there is really a zero-sum exercise for the school district? Very likely a loss. So.
Yeah, that's a good question. I just like try. Unfortunately, I can't answer that question. Maybe Stacy, from a kind of government affairs perspective, maybe you can answer that question better than I can.
Yeah, I think, um, sort of two questions built into that that I'm hearing. I think one, um, just naming the, the advantage that the legislature saw of the school support fee existing in general was a way to have a greater portion of the state school fund come from local revenue. Um, and so, you know, it was really billed as a way to, excuse me, reduce the amount of state school funding that needs to come out of the general fund. Um, so from the legislature's perspective, that was the advantage. Why the requirement to let the local district set the rate? I'm not certain how they landed on that or, you know, what the, what the argument there was. Um, at one point, the bill did just set a flat rate and and that was changed at some point in the negotiation process.
So, um, I have a few comments on a question as well. Um, so it's coming, it's money that's not going into the state school, so it is money that is not available for schools. And then it's the local district that winds up being able to do the fifteen to thirty percent. So there's still, there's money that's not going in. They're not paying it. Um, is this also supposed to be a program that's supposed to bring in new companies? This company's been here for how many years now?
Microchip.
Yeah, how many years?
Since the nineties.
So at least twenty-five years. And so can they apply for this every five years that they're not paying the property taxes on it?
Yes, but all of the new investments that they're making then come back from the property tax rolls. And it just continues to allow them to grow in Gresham. So Microchip is a great example. When I started in, at the city about ten years ago, Microchip had about five hundred employees with all of the new investments that they'd made at their Gresham facility. They're up to nine hundred employees now. And so that has been a significant impact on the Gresham economy, given the, uh, family wage jobs that they provide, partnerships that they create with, with schools like Cal, um, the community college. They've been a really community partner. But the Enterprise Zone Program very much is used as an improvement tool as well. So Element Six, our diamond manufacturing company, uh, which is like box jewelry and jewelry. Uh, the Enterprise Zone Program played a very big role in them choosing the site in Gresham, and they were doing a worldwide search. They ended up making an, an investment over a hundred million dollars, and much of that is their building and much of the equipment. The building is one year away from coming back on the tax rolls, and they currently have about seventy employees that are high-wage, high-tech jobs in the city of Gresham. So the Enterprise Zone Program, excuse me, it's not just for retention. It very much plays a large role in our improvement.
So you said it's coming back on the tax rolls. So how long has it been off the tax?
Five years.
Five years. So just again, they've, they've been able to renew.
But not for that same ask. It's only for new investments.
So if they've got other things, they.
Exactly. Right. So the, they would only be able to review that five-year tax abatement on the building for the five years. After that, five years, that building comes back on the tax rolls and any new investment that they make in the facility, should they do an expansion or add additional equipment, that is what they would be able to get another application for.
So the, I think the, I mean, it certainly answers the question, Stacy, thank you, about, um, what the legislature's, uh, intentions were, and that was to have, that it'd be a, a less of an impact to them. And then the businesses. I guess the, the concern I have is that in order to, um, not have as much money come out of the general fund, it feels like we are now involved in economic development of the city, but it really isn't our purview to do. And I think the concern is that we don't have any, we don't have any say, as you just articulated, all the reasons that they have to, all the requirements they have to meet. That's awesome. We have, we have no, we have no say in them. We just are a pass-through funding, uh, element. And so that, that I have to say feels just a little bit off, I guess.
Yeah, I, I think the question is so, has, has the city ever dealt with an enterprise zone? Qualifying company not applying, I guess, not paying the community service fee?
No, we've never had a company just qualify because they didn't pay their fee. Because these companies are still receiving a significant percentage of property tax abatement. Um, and so if it meant not paying their fee, then they lose the entire abatement. So it's not in the best interest of the company to not pay that because then they just fall. We.
Well, I think the question, we don't have it. Um, the only choice we really have is to make it either less compelling of an enterprise zone or as compelling as everybody else. Um, I think the, the only concerns I would have, if I can just push back to district leadership, is to make sure the IGA is not tied about election parameters so that just recognizing that that's the danger of loss. I mean, the one percent will, will hurt. Like, to be probably very transparent, this is a reduction of funding for your local schools.
And, 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 and the, the one percent isn't set in stone. I think that is kind of a placeholder for when the city, um, collects a fee on behalf of another entity. And in this case, we could probably have a discussion about that one percent administrative fee. Um, that is just what's in the, the, the draft. So absolutely, I think the city would be willing to have that conversation.
So, uh, my proposal would be, unless it's on the table we're approving, I think most of the link has to be in the district office.
Like, just to clarify, when you said we don't have an option, I, I think.
But they do.
We do.
We have not a percentage, not.
No, we have an option to approve a support fee or not.
Okay, so we're choosing, we could choose a fifteen percent reduction.
No, we could choose not to pursue, not to agree to do anything.
Can I explain what the, the ramifications of that would be then? So in the case that you do not adopt a school support fee, the City of Gresham cannot offer a five-year abatement. Companies can still receive a three-year abatement. In the case that we can no longer have the five-year abatement, the city cannot collect that community service fee. And so the city would not have those extra dollars from those companies to put into economic development projects like supporting the Mechatronics Program, supporting infrastructure improvements, supporting youth and engagement, uh, opportunities. So that, that would be the ramifications to the city of not being able to offer that.
So this might be a question for Stacy. Um, in the presentation, it said that, um, anyone that has done this in our area has not gone beyond the fifteen percent. And why is, why wouldn't you go to thirty percent?
Sure, Charah. Um, I first just want to respond quickly to some, you know, the back and forth on the administrative fee and the IGA and just name, um, there is no requirement to have the IGA with the city. Uh, the district could do all of the billing on its own if it, if it chose to. Um, that was just something that the city had offered to try to alleviate a little bit of that administrative burden, um, on the district business office. So I just want to be really clear about that. You, it's an option. You don't have to pursue the IGA if you don't want to. Um, and likewise, don't have to set a rate, but it does have that implication for the city and what they are able to offer. Um, and so then Charah, in answer to the question of why haven't folks gone over fifteen percent? There's not much of an incentive to, given that it's, it's not actually any additional money coming into the district. Um, right? It's, it's all going to be offset by a reduction in the state school fund and the amount that you get from the state. So given that folks have erred on the fifteen percent, believing, as I understand it, that that is more compelling, um, right? It, it offers those businesses that higher property tax abatement, uh, which is a more compelling economic development tool. And then on the flip side of that, there is that risk of if your local revenues come in higher than you were anticipating, when there's that true-up of the state school fund, there is some risk of owing money back to the state. And so that risk is potentially minimized by staying at the lower end of that scale.
And so to be clear, if we do nothing, there's still the economic development for previous. It's just not the five-year. And while yes, there hasn't been any companies that haven't paid it back, however, there is the possibility that they may not be able to pay it back, nor if it's a bankruptcy situation, they may not even be able to back pay it. So then we've lost those funds from here.
No, because in the case that a company doesn't pay, then they have to pay the property taxes. So the school district would still get all of the property taxes.
But if they have no money.
They get billed with property taxes. They don't, there's no tax to pay. They are, they're asked to pay this. But if you're bankrupt, you're bankrupt. You can't pay what you don't have.
Yeah. And so then we've lost that money, whatever that amount is. So it is a risk.
The other, the other point I just like to quickly make too is if, if the City of Gresham isn't able to offer that five-year extended abatement, we are not as competitive as other communities in the state. And, um, companies are going to choose a site where they can hit the five-year abatement over. So it does impact the city's competitiveness to attract new companies and to keep retention and expansion projects within our city and not having them move to another site.
And, and I absolutely, um, hear that concern. I don't understand then why the school district, which our single business purpose is to educate children, and now it's on our shoulders to make a decision that could potentially mean less revenue in order for the city to be able to be competitive in an economic situation. That doesn't make any sense to me. I mean, it, it is a burden for us, but it's a, I mean, all of a sudden, again, we're in the business of creating an economic advantage for the city by not getting any extra money and potentially, you know. And again, one of the things too is that when you talked about the, uh, community service fee, if, uh, if that's significant and I'm making a decision based on the city's, uh, uh, resources and revenue that they come in, I would want to see what those numbers were. I mean, to your point, is it a million? Is it a hundred thousand? Is it, I mean, what, what is the significance of that?
I guess for me, it feels frustrating that this, and, and it's not the city to recognize, the city is not the best in place. And so the state is asking the schools to take a hit where we really can't afford to take a hit, um, and, and carry the risk to save themselves school funding dollars so that those come locally instead of out of the state, which why do we want to overburden our local community with taxes as opposed to take it from the state? Um, is one thought. The other thing for me is if it truly is a huge benefit for the city, then my opinion is this, the city needs to take some of that burden, meaning not charge for the assessment of those fees because we would then be doing it on behalf of the city. It's not benefiting the school district any. It's benefiting the city. So that works.
Is that in relation to the administrative fee, the one percent? And I, and I guess Stacy, maybe you could speak to this too. And this kind of gives the question about risk. So in the case that a company didn't pay their school support fee, then that, there would be no local revenue. So then you would collect your state funds. Is that right, Stacy? So there's, there's no scenario where the district isn't getting those money. You're either collecting it from the school support fee or from the state. So there's no scenario where you're not going to get those. Is that correct, Stacy?
Yeah, that, I believe that is correct, Erica.
Are businesses required, or is there some requirement for them to hire local? You said that one would have high paying positions, or are they required to hire people?
Per state law, we can't require a company to hire locally. We can only require them to host physicians through our local workforce providers. So we work extremely closely in our economic development team with our companies to make sure that they are aware of, um, local organizations that help to find jobs for Gresham and East County residents. It's part of the reason that we're working so closely to connect our industries with our school districts, and we're building that local workforce pipeline. So we understand what skills are needed at the companies and that those skills are being taught in the high school CTE programs and Mechatronics, and building that workforce pipeline for these companies from our local youth talent pool. Okay, so that's, that's a big part of the work that we do, but we, we are not able, the state wants to.
And I guess the one question I have is your community's resource fee, that's on top of what you get from the state, right?
The city.
Or is it reducing the funding you get from the state?
No, this, the city doesn't pursue state funds in relation to the enterprise.
So I'm kind of, I'm feeling a little bit like Kathy. We do education and this is a finance question. This is an interesting tactic question. Um, it does feel to me, and it's bad legislation on the part of the enterprise zone to begin with, that it's an equity issue because we're saying through the enterprise zone that they don't have to pay the property taxes, which should normally be collected to go to the state to be distributed through the state's school fund. So there's lots of money there. Um, there's been approximately two hundred and seventy-six million dollars lost in property tax revenue from all of these enterprise zones that they've had. So there is a, not just Gresham, but throughout the state. Um, so I, I see that as just a continuing problem that I'm not quite sure the fifteen or thirty percent, I feel like it's a little bit of a shell. It's a bone that they're throwing to us, is to be quite blunt. Um, and it's, it's a legislative issue. It's not the city. It's not. But it's a legislative issue where they're trying to say, we're collecting money and then we don't have to give you as much money later. It's, it's that whole smoke and mirrors about the money. Um, and I'm not quite sure again why, uh, why we wouldn't ask for the thirty percent. And again, without, um, I don't know how many jobs we have been able to get in Gresham with this. We don't have any other data other than there's a company that's here that does some business here that does good things for Gresham, but I don't know what the impact has been and what the future impact will be. How many more jobs is this? How many more people is this? And then are they going to come back in five more years and say, we want to redo it and take even more money out of it?
Yeah, it's, 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 it's an economic, the Enterprise Zone is an economic development tool. We have very few tools in our toolbox in the state of Oregon. Um, and so, I mean, it's, it's always that but for question, right? Would these companies that come to Gresham, but for this enterprise? Would these companies continue to expand in Gresham? When Microchip, Unsemiconductor, Boeing, they all have facilities all over the world, all over the country where they could make that investment. They choose to make that investment in Gresham. And what role does the Enterprise Zone Program play in those decisions? So it's hard to, to provide uncertainty of what's going to happen, but without having this robust economic development tool, it makes our jobs as economic development practitioners harder to do because it reduces kind of what we can put on the table for these companies to encourage them to build and expand in Gresham.
So it's, it's, it's one to three years to do the expansion of four and five. That's when this is, comes into play.
Yeah.
You haven't had that before, the ability to do the four, your four and five. Is that a new program with this Enterprise Zone?
No, we've always had that ability, but with House Bill two thousand and nine, they're saying in order to continue to provide that extended abatement, your school districts must access.
So this is a, a, I mean, you guys, they're taking away your ability to do something and they're forcing you to do it through the school district. So one of the questions, and, and you kind of answered it just now in terms of new investments, new companies that come here seem, that seems, uh, the Enterprise Zone would be far more, um, important for that versus the expansion. Far more, um, important for that versus the expansion. So I thought, well, wouldn't they just expand if it was going to be good for their business? And then you answered that for the, for those that have locations around. But again. I'm a school board member wanting to educate children and I am now having to consider. Whether or not the city can attract businesses. I mean, at, at some point, I just, it feels like it's like this.
I think there's also a side that we're not seeing where, let's say, Microchip, they, they. In the last ten years. You know, hopefully a lot of the jobs came here. Hopefully they were families, hopefully they're pulling homes here, hopefully they're sending their kids to school here.
Well, and that's a really good point because I was going to ask that. We can't require that they hire locally, but are we tracking whether or not they do? Because when we, we are, I mean, again, it's just another. Distraction from our core. Um, purpose of being here. And when I hear say hopefully it's working. That does not be still confidence in me that all of our extra effort away from educating kids is moving the dial.
Yeah, and, and we've paid the superintendent to listen to me. Shake my fist at the clouds, like that's bad legislation, Chris, but that's what it is. It's put the school in a bad position. It is, to me, it all feeds itself. We provide economic incentive for companies to expand. We provide workforce for those companies. To be more and more inclined for family wage jobs. We feed each other. It would be really, I, I'd be pretty opposed to thirty percent. I'd also be opposed to doing nothing because the city, I just check funded and confirmed. Sitting on eight, eight, a million community service fee.
No.
At, at the total.
No.
No?
No. I don't believe we have that much money. That would be nice, but I don't believe we have that.
Then I would be raised.
Well, and, and I guess Blake. I, I will say in, I'm not sure I'm prepared to consider it. And if I was, I would need a lot more. Um, specific data to know what it is that. The hopefully doesn't quite work for me, that the city will be in a pinch and won't be very, um. Competitive, but what exactly does that mean? What is the community service fee? How much money has, has, uh, transferred? How much will you use? That's significant to me.
And I think what was lost in my misunderstanding of how you get the funding. Cause I thought you can get some funding from the state, but it's. Is there an opportunity where? Since we are essentially in the gateway to this five year and we would be potentially losing money. Is there a way that with the community service fee, you could provide? Some services for us, you know, it could be maintaining, uh, fields. It could be. You know, providing low cost car fee, you know, something like that. You, we can work in partnership where some of the money from the community service fee. Somehow gets redesigned to help our students.
Stacy, could you please speak to that concern about the, the school district using money? Um. The, the House Bill three thousand and nine aside from the one percent administrative fee?
Yeah, and I will apologize. Um, I can hear some folks a little bit more clearly than others. So if I didn't quite. If I'm not answering the question that was asked, um. Please interrupt me and, and re-clarify. I don't, there is not necessarily a world in which the district would receive. Less than what they are entitled to out of the state school fund. I think when I have mentioned the, the concern and why folks thought about, you know, not going beyond the fifteen percent. Um, it, it is this, the problem that exists with any local revenue collection. Where it's a best guess on the front end about how much you're going to bring in in local revenue. And then when the state school fund is actually trued up. Um, right? If you have brought in more than you anticipated in local revenue, you are expected to pay back that difference to the state. Um, that, that is what exists and is the case with any local revenue collection that you're doing. It's just that by having this new s- school support fee. That risk increases, right? Ever so marginally, um. By collecting more local revenue and needing to make a best guess about that. Um, but again, in, in no space should the district be losing money. Because that equalization is always going to come into play to ensure that you're getting exactly what you're entitled to. Out of the state school fund in whatever combination of local versus state funds.
So it sounds like regardless of the school support fee, the district is still going to get the same amount of money. It's just a matter of whether that money is coming from the state. Or whether that money is coming from the companies that are paying the school support fee. You'll still be receiving the same amount of money. So I want you to understand that the district's not receiving any less money because of this.
The less money would be the one percent.
Right.
It is certain fees, which would be a percentage of what is collected, which we. I, I actually would like to see what that would look like because I'm looking at what it's going to cost for us as a school district. To collect those fees from our finance department. Because we have to now send out bills and then we have, we're not a collections agency, right? So I understand their rationale that they gave within the IGA, but the other side of it. I would like to have a little bit more information on that one percent and the rationale for that. Because I would say that that would be problematic. I would say whether we're getting one percent less and or. It's very school district staff to have to collect those fees. And again, not. City issue right now, it's really, the state has made that determination, but. Through the IGA, I would like to. Call our figures, possibly call our financial department, what it would cost us to.
A couple of questions. James, one for you. Do we ever get close to. Enough local revenue where we have to pay back the, or is there any concern from you that we would reach that threshold? Whether we chose fifteen percent or thirty percent? So question one, and then the. City, is there a benefit to the city or what would that benefit be? You choosing fifteen percent, thirty percent, or does that not matter for the city?
Yeah, and I would say, I, I don't know the answer. I would have to talk to our finance department. I don't recall there being a situation where we, we, we got to that space, but it's really in. You know, what is the fees that get collected and then, you know, we usually had in our budgeting process, you know. An opportunity to kind of project on what that collection would look like. So I know we're pretty conservative in that, so. It's not my understanding that we've ever exceeded that, where we would have to pay the state back. But I'd have to verify with this, and I know he's listening, so.
Oh, or is it, is it the timeliness of when we get the state's wealth fund versus when the property taxes come in and are. Otherwise paid? I mean, it could just be the timing that we might have to.
There's opportunities to true that up every year. So there's a time where. Property taxes are collected and then we're giving the money from the state and then there's reconciliation of what that looks like because we're always going to live left back. Like year or two. So I mean, that's, that's the challenges where I, I really do need to have conversation with this.
I guess so. The last thing for me is finding out what that would be. Do you think it's a, a better benefit for the district? For us to do that work? Um. It's not really district work in my opinion, but.
I would say no. Say, um, you know, the administrative fee is. One percent, which is a bit less than what normally administrative fees would be in this kind of situation. Usually it's. So, but again, I, um, I do know that would be extraordinary burden on our. Our, um.
So, so I'm going to kind of take a reading of the room. Um, are there any more substantive questions? What's the, what is the timeline? Do we need to make a decision on this tonight? And if we do not, then what are the further questions that would make us not want to make a decision? Is bad legislation, do we have to look? Um, what is, is.
So, so I would just, I'd, I'd make a recommendation and this, well, the, the board. You know, if you want to vote on it and override me, that would be great. I am not interested in considering it unless, um, there is a zero sum exercise, at a minimum, zero sum exercise for this, for the district. And given the, uh, what it feels like, what everybody might be thinking. Heard an answer to Sean's question. Because we could be in a position of even gaining some, something in, for the effort. And that is whether or not we would be eligible to receive any of the community service fees. I mean, not a lot. I, I don't even know what that might look like. So I would need more information about what the, the amount of the community, community service fee and where it's going. Whether or not the school can be considered for any of that in the future. As kind, I mean, we're kind of negotiating here. You need us and we really don't need anything, but if we got something, maybe that would. Help. Um, and the one percent fee would, I would never consider that because I'm not prepared to pay. For something that is not a benefit to us. So.
The, the Gresham city council makes decisions on how the, the community service fees are used. And I guess, you know, just from my perspective as an econ- economic development practitioner. When you say you're not getting anything, I would disagree with that. I mean. You're getting new companies, you're getting family wage jobs and that's not nothing.
Well, you said you're not required to hire locally. That's part of the, with my question.
They're not.
Then that means that we're at least getting jobs for our graduating kids or families, but we're not getting, we're not even guaranteed that.
But I just, I just want to make the case that it's not nothing. I mean, economic, economic development in the city brings a lot of benefits.
I absolutely appreciate that perspective. That really is important to hear. And in a future presentation, I would like to see some specifics, you know, some hard data that says what? I mean, build, paint that picture for us as opposed to just, hey, there really is. Because right now, I mean, if I had to, the way the pros and cons, I'm not getting to zero for me.
I shouldn't, to be honest, I think some of the companies that are on this list, I think Microchip is a, is a great example. And I know people that work for Microchip, so I, I do know that there are people in our community that work there, but I know that. Um. The perception about some of those other companies is that there are not very many people employed at those very large facilities. And so. It, it would be a question. It, are those creating jobs? Because the other thing is. If those were homes being built, then those are bringing families who are potentially sending kids to our school. So again, it's a kind of like a. We hope, we hope it's, but there's, there's nothing telling us that it for sure is. Um. Not to make us pay for something that we didn't get ourselves into.
Unfortunately, we are not able to get that data from companies. They are not able to share data about where their employees live. Um, they can give me, you know, general percentages. Like I think I heard at one point from Microchip that like forty percent of their employees lived in these local county area. But I, I can't get more data than that.
You said there's a company right now that we don't adopt this tonight or what, what happens with them?
So in the case that we don't adopt the school support fee, um. Microchip's application, they would have to default to the three year. If we don't have school support fee adopted by any owners. Um, so they would have to default to that, to that material.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, and then, um. Joe, quick question, design and clarification.
Just, just a little bit of. I, I think it's an overreach for us to talk about community support fee and trying to leverage that. If we want to do that, it must make a presentation account. But it would be very appropriate for us to interject at this level. And try to do that much as it would be appropriate for. Another district to come and negotiate with us directly instead of through our superintendent district staff.
And so I wanted to, I'm not sure if I heard this in the presentation or not. If we take action tonight, it extends it from three years to five years. Um, our action tonight. Is not in perpetuity. It would come back for renewal. Stacy, is that right?
Uh, so Chair Howard, my understanding is that once you set the rate, that rate does exist. In perpetuity for the length of the enterprise zone, uh, which the city can re-up again in those ten year increments. Um, and I just did want to name and maybe Sarah can interject. My, my understanding is that. There was not an expectation for the board, excuse me, to take action this evening. Um. We do have a draft resolute, or a template resolution, uh, was initially. Prepared by OSBA and has been finessed a little bit. Um, basically what Centennial and Park Roads had used that. Kind of makes some acknowledgements and calling out that partnership with local governments around, um. Taking over some of that invoicing, but we would, we would prepare, uh, provide you with that. Template resolution when you're, if and when you're ready to take action.
If, if you guys ever do a presentation with us again, if we consider this. I would like to have solid answers opposed to, I believe so. Around if the company were bankrupt and didn't pay their fees. Would we then receive the state funds equivalent to?
Stacy, are you, I mean, if a, if a. If a property owner defaults on their property taxes, it would just be, it would be similar to if any property owner, anywhere in the city.
But she said she thought that that was the case where we would be trued up. But.
Yeah, yeah, I, um. Director Peters, I, I just hadn't had that question posed directly previously, so. I would want to confirm that to tell you that a hundred percent is the case. Um. But again, that is, that is my understanding that in that reconciliation process. You know, any discrepancy in what is actually collected locally gets trued up one way or the other. Um, but it's the first time I've heard that question about enterprise zones and businesses defaulting. So I will, I will ask the appropriate folks and get back to you.
Appreciate it. Okay, so.
I'm, I'm just going to put my foot out. So, so Intel just dropped a bunch of jobs from those. Right? Microchip isn't doing that. Like we're. We are not in this soft pushing economic space in East County where we should be. Trying to find every advantage from the schools. If we can go what is neutral and. Be competitive, that only helps our kids in our families. I know that our Barlow Gresham students were literally at Microchip last week touring for future workers. I know that Mountain Community College is bugged so tight and they're, they're expanding cybersecurity and things that we have. A compelling opportunity to be a partner. And right now we are delving deep. With our question because we don't know. And the reason we don't know is because we're in education. So let's not try to overstep that. And make this bigger than, than it needs to be. What's the most neutral action we can take to be a compelling destination for businesses in East County? That only benefits us.
And Blake, I absolutely appreciate that and you're exactly right. And that is not the information that is presented. We are in education. So I think what I'm asking for are exact. I'm glad that you know that Microchip was just at our schools and all of that. I, I, I do not have that information. So I would want a better understanding of the funds and what the benefits are. And, and I agree with you. I, I'm not saying we can't get there. I just. And the one percent, the one percent is a loss. It's one percent. I have no idea what that means. Is it a hundred thousand? Is it a million? There's, there's no, there's no specific. I, I just. I appreciate that and I also want to make sure that I'm making a decision based on all the information I need.
So what I'd like to propose then is that certainly this has sparked a lot of questions for us because we haven't had this conversation. Um, and what I would like to do then is as we continue to think about the questions, think about the things that we can do, we can't do. We can force the city council to use the community funds, but we can certainly lobby them to do that. We can talk more with, with Stacy if we need to about things. We can also plan on lobbying our legislators and saying, this is really difficult. I would like for this to come back to the November twentieth board meeting. And so if you have any further questions, if you have data that you would like to have. In order to be able to make a decision on this, I'd like to know how many jobs we're talking about, how many jobs we've had, how big this is. Just a little bit more context to it. Um, and, um. And then we can come back and that gives time November twentieth. You said by April, but I don't want to wade into, you know, the. Getting close to the crunch time because then you lose your negotiating opportunity with them. Um, but I think we'd like to have a little bit more information since this again was. Nuders, you know, this whole, um. And because they put it back to the schools to do this when we're not. This is not our realm, our, our own education. So is that, so.
I guess I would just ask, is it putting you in a bargaining? Is it putting you in a pinch if we went, you know? Because I, I agree with a lot of what's said. I, I don't want to disadvantage our city. So I see that point. I share the frustrations of the states, but us in this is different because it's. Has nothing to do with education and so it's pitting the city against the schools as opposed to just taking the blame for their own things. But I don't want the city to end up disadvantaged. I don't think that's in the, that's the interest of the city or the school district. So. Um, I, I guess my questions would be more around what percentage that would be. And, and I don't know that there's any complaint evidence. We should go to thirty percent, but.
Okay. All right. So, yeah, to you.
So I would also recommend reviewing the IGA. Because I will take it and talk to district staff to see the impact of that. And if I have any questions, we'll be joined to see. And so I'll be ready to speak to that in the second day.
All right. Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And.
Thank you.
So just doing a quick time check on here. I know we have our, I'm assuming for our beyond, James, can I move the legislative?
We're going to serve that. All right, so welcome back to the National Department of Education's work session. We are going to be discussing legislative priorities and I'm going to leave this kind of separate place.
Sarah, can you?
We have a slide. And I should have asked before I jumped right into this if they needed a break or anything.
This will be a quick. There's a handout. Thank you. So as we all are aware, we're coming up to a legislative session. The 25 legislative session that starts in late January and it goes until probably the end of May. This, you know, every other year there's a long session and a short session. This is the long session and this is really around our biennium allocation and budgets. There's a lot of the legislation that has to do with K-12 schools. There's a lot of legislation that does not do with K-12 schools. But I wanted to kind of give you some information because as we've kind of talked about and me leaving the district, one of the things I said I was going to do was continue to keep advocating for appropriate funding. So these are like four areas that I would like, will continue to keep advocating for with the Coalition of Army School Administrators, along with local legislators, as well as U.S. legislative officials. I gave a two-page handout and Mrs. Dina helped me to put together a document for you as you're engaging with local electives within the region. But I have just a quick PowerPoint and just a quick conversation with you. This is not an exhaustive list, but this is like four areas that I would like us to consider to be able to support. So the first legislative priority has to do with adequate state school fund for the 25, 27 biennium. As you know, this is the last year of the 23, 25 biennium and we're going, the legislature is going to be talking about 25, 27 biennium, which is going to have a physical impact on our state school fund and our budget. The current service level is a method used by the state to estimate the cost for continuing services. Now, I will say that Governor Kometek has recommended updates to the current service level calculation method that significantly will improve the accuracy and will help support the cost. An estimated 510 million additional statewide dollars from the previous methodology in the upcoming biennium. So if it's funded, it would mean a significant increase of funding for its biennium program. So I am going to say that one of the things that we need to continue to keep advocating for is sustainable and adequate funding for our K-12 system. As you are aware, in the sheet that I gave you, we were at $10.2 billion the last biennium. Right now with the governor's budget, right, it's really not shared yet, but we're looking somewhere in the neighborhood of 11.2, 11.3. That would be a good place to start. We would not say that is the ceiling, that's definitely the floor. Because as you know, that we're still in negotiations with our license and we still have to work. Because as you know, that we're still in negotiations with our license and we still have to work with our administrative colleagues. And so the cost of doing business in the Gresham Barlow School District continues to remain high. So the first legislative priority is really around adequate funding. Questions on that one right now? The second one has to do with uh an increase in special education funding. And there's really a part A and a part B, so you could say it's two different ones. But the first one has to do with increasing the special education funding cap that has been for a long time at eleven percent. And as you are aware, uh, we get funded uh at eleven percent even though we may be above the eleven percent cap. And some of the data that we have in Gresham Barlow School District, we've been at least fourteen, fourteen-two, fourteen-six uh throughout the years. I just asked our executive director for student support services. What, because they haven't reconciled this year's numbers yet? She thinks that if they reconcile the number, we're probably going to be close to sixteen percent for this last year. So as you can tell, it's not keeping up with the costs. And if you think about, if we're getting reimbursed for eleven percent and we're spending fourteen percent, what is that, three percent cost us? Um, and that uh three percent is about four million dollars. So, you know, there's um some opportunity for the legislature to approve some additional funding. The other piece is the high-cost disability. And we know that, you know, we cannot serve all students in the Gresham Barlow School District. Sometimes you have to uh pay for them to go to an outside placement through the N E S D or through another uh program. Uh, high-cost disability is really expensive, particularly when we get double-weighted um in the state school fund. And so basically um, we could receive additional monies for high-cost disability, but there's a certain amount of money that's in pot. And then we can actually ask for some of that money uh to help pay for our unreimbursed um high-cost disability. And realistically, you know, we may get forty to fifty cents. For some of that money, but not necessarily all of it. So as we've been kind of doing some um verification in the Gresham Barlow School District, we've been actually spending between five and a half, six and a half million dollars a year. On our high-cost disability students. And so it's a really important aspect to really try to advocate for. Again, especially a cap as well as some additional changes to that cost disability fund.
I'm looking to sit down.
This is going to happen a million dollars in your spending.
Include, is this four point three included in that or that's in addition to the?
That's different. I could, what I was talking about, the first one has to do with especially a cap, the eleven percent versus what we're offering fourteen and almost eighty percent this last year. The high-cost disability fund is really for those students that we can't necessarily serve. And it's going to cost a lot of different money to serve their educational needs. So it might have to be through a different program. So we get double-weighted by the state. And so anything over thirty thousand dollars, we can ask for some of that money back based on the number of students across the state. Uh, as well as then what they had in the copper. Then districts can actually ask for a certain amount of money. But likely, we're probably going to get thirty cents on the dollar for the amount of money that they have. So again, it's likely just, just dollars and cents according to our finance department. Uh, we have spent anywhere from five and a half to six and a half million dollars and the cost has risen.
When you look at a typical outside placement, it runs about a hundred and ten, hundred and twenty thousand per student. We get, let's just do the simple math. We get ten thousand per student, say that's the number right now. It's a little, a ten thousand per student from the general fund and then sped is double. So we get twenty thousand per student identified and sped. And when you have forty-two, forty-four hundred and ten outside placements, you're running at a deficit. And you're taking from the general fund to serve your specialized students. And then that also has an impact on your general classes. This is same.
My. So special education is funded by the feds? Or is it funded by the state or is it funded by?
All of the above, but when the law passed, because I am all, when the law passed in seventy-six, the feds promised a forty percent uh funding rate so the states wouldn't have to bear it all. They've never really gotten above nineteen and usually have around seven to ten. So it is the state that is covering the cost for the most part. But because seven percent is a lot, you want to follow those regulations and laws.
So the third legislative priority has to do with. In the future, in many ways, and I know many board members would agree around this table that some of the challenges that we're having to navigate through is the fact that. You know, there are new laws without consideration of money by for us to require spending. So for instance, an example is really budgeting a certain amount of money for um unemployment for the summer. Now, some districts have been seeing a lot higher number. There are some districts that are seeing one to two million dollars that are being spent under their funds because of summer learning. I think that in Gresham Barlow, um, we've had a robust summer school program in the last couple of years. And so a lot of our um staff that might qualify for unemployment to work in Gresham Barlow. But I would say that, you know, we're going to have to gain around five hundred thousand dollars here for cost of unemployment. And I think it's going to start growing because the state is not able to give us monies for um summer school programming. We may have more of our employees that be accessing um benefits. And so it's one of those things where it's somewhat of a, but maybe because we're having to then um utilize general fund dollars to be able to support um staffing. And so it's one of the things that we need to ensure that the state is not making decisions that put a financial hardship. And not just financial hardship, but it's taking time and energy from our current staffing. Because I know that a lot of our staff do a lot of programming for summer school and hiring for summer school and making sure that we can run a robust programming. And so I do think that this is just one example. I could certainly in this five, six more. But I think that, you know, these three um, these three legislative priorities are ones that we like to kind of um watch out for. Not asking them to put together a resolution, that's being that, you know, as we continue to advocate for appropriate funding, we start being at special in the cap. Uh, as well as, you know, high-costs refunding. I think those are things to pay attention as we continue to start uh moving into the next legislative session. Again, um, it's going to be important for your superintendent, certainly superintendent, because this is going to be launch and effects um for the next biennium. We do believe that the next biennium is going to be somewhat challenging statewide. And then really after the twenty-five, we said, you know, this is. Into a lot of what's happening. Wanted to, please bring this to your attention. Uh, some of the uh districts around the state have started to have conversations with their boards. I did put who our local electives are, some contact information so that if you wanted to contact them. I've invited them to come and visit our schools, so I'm going to be doing that. Be to ask you, join me in those conversations. But just wanted to kind of point out legislative priorities for us to pay attention to. And then if you have an opportunity to reach out, is help them to understand what the needs are in Gresham Barlow School District.
So, I had to talk to you and Chris about when these things come up because, you know, you're going to do your due diligence to advocate, comes to will, OSBA will, I'm sure. But individual board members are always so, any individual is more impactful. And Chris, you mentioned in the legislative day or something that.
Yeah, usually they do that in April, there's a all hands on deck, go to the, the Capitol and, and visit with your folks.
Well, and I, I did wasn't even aware of that. So I, I absolutely think that anybody that's interested should go and do that. And I also would point out that um Ricky Bries is our representative and he is the vice chair of the House interim committee on higher education. And he's also the co-chair of the joint interim committee on ways and means, subcommittee on education. So right now we have somebody that should be listening, particularly between now and November fifth because he's up for reelection. But um, you know, tell our story.
What are we doing on November seventh, Chris?
On November seventh?
Isn't that the OSBA dinner thing or something?
Yeah.
Isn't that what we do there too?
Uh, that's when we hear about some of these things, the things that OSBA is going to be, they're going to be talking about some of these things. This is part of OSBA, but yeah, that's on the, but we don't make our argument to them.
No, they, they.
Say, go to this dinner, we get a chance to talk to them, we're seated in a certain.
Yeah, I, I was there last year, I don't call that, but I, you will make more of an impact when you go speak in front of your legislators.
Well, and I was just going to bring up um that, yeah, on that legislative day, that's, that's a good thing to do. But one of the positive things that came out of um remote access COVID is previously, if you wanted to testify about a bill, you had to go drive to Salem and go do it for your parents. You can do it remotely now. You still have to sign up ahead of time, you can't just decide that day, I'm going to do this. So they have only so many slots, you can do it. But they get way more people and when they, when we can give examples, not what's going on, we can give example about high-cost disability and about how much more we're spending to educate all students. That's way more powerful than them seeing it on newspaper. So we definitely want to be in touch with any of these folks because we're crossover between Maluma County and Byers County.
Well, whenever they visit the district, I'm happy to.
Yeah, yeah. And then, yeah, whatever, um, we're going to get the update then on, on the November seventh, which is the um legislative update from OSBA. About the uh, the work that they're going to be doing as well. So it helps us all have a common uh message.
But why is that November seventh, Owen?
Is that?
I'm going to November seventh.
Yeah, me too.
I'm letting you know that I'm holding on to.
Yeah. Yeah.
She's talking out pretty hard, really.
To you are not attending.
I'm not attending, but I'm going to the legislative. I'm going to the dinner.
One thing that I will do. One thing I will plan to do in the November work session is give you a two-sided handout. That will speak to each of the different priorities and then give you an explanation, some background and the impact of the Gresham Barlow School District. So those can be additional talking points. I kind of have that, but I did, I chose not to give you too much information. We thought that by sharing these legislative priorities with you, right? And then giving you the two-page handout, it was a place to start. But in November, I'd like to be able to give you more specificity on some information so that if you are engaging with Representative Bries or Secretary Corset or one of our other local electives. And if you're speaking directly to, you know, priority number one, you can talk about the state school fund, you can talk about the context behind it, a little bit of information. And then the effect that it would have on the Gresham Barlow School District if we don't get adequate funding this next time around. So I feel like it's all hands on deck and I want to make sure you're equipped with the information you need. Um, Athena and myself are trying to put some of that communication together along with our team. And so we'll make sure that, again, in November, we share a little bit more information and certainly before I leave December. Ensure that the team has continued information. We'll have more information to ship as we'll have at the OSBA meeting as well as some additional hosted legislative meetings. But once we start the new year, we're going to be pivoting into the law legislative session. And there's going to be opportunities for executive leadership district to go down to Salem and to meet with COSA as well as maybe you as local like the officials as well. But have conversations with your colleagues, partners and this issues.
And one of the things, keep in mind as well, that um certainly they want to hear about where we've got gaps and things. But it's also nice to be able to go down there and talk to them about, here's the money we received and here's the success we have with it. Because they do want to hear a little bit of feel-good stories. If we go down there and just complain at them, it doesn't always have as much effect. But if we say, here's what we did with it, God, here's what we've been doing, we have a little bit.
Well, I'm, I'm sure we can provide you with some of that data, particularly around some of the summer school dollars. So we'll, our team will work to get these put together along with this. Other questions? Thank you.
Alright, um, let's see, future board agenda topics. So we have been meeting and cleaning up the spreadsheet a little bit about some of the request items. And in our last um get-together, we went through some of that and kind of started plugging those in to places where it even made sense. With other regular reports that we got, some things that are being handled um independently and some of the things that we've already taken care of. Anybody can go and look at the spreadsheet Tracy and sort on there. Um, so we've, we've got some things that are updated on that and we should be able to see. And we're going to send out something happy that kind of gave an overview of these things are scheduled. I forget Tracy where we were going with that.
When we put it on there and I followed up with my two board members and I wanted to provide that information, I haven't yet.
Okay.
Um, so I think it was just personally telling the board member to go look and see the notes on there.
Okay. My, we'll see the notes.
I'm Jenny, when my next one, I go. Okay, I like white, so there we go. Um, priorities.
Yeah, yeah, no, I guess, I totally get it, dark topic. Okay, so that is, yes.
Well, I'm totally unrelated, it's a different topic, I just have a quick question.
Okay.
School-based health center. It's a little confusing because I know that it's our building that we approved to build, but it wasn't our money. And the community, I'm getting, and I'm talking, I'm really just, I could put it on a, a spreadsheet for information, but I just, I'm not quite sure where it is. Because if in the press, it's three hundred, three million and it's twenty-four hundred square feet, which means it's twelve fifty per square foot. And that is almost triple what the go, the average is four ninety-eight for a medical building, so.
I've got a couple of emails directly from community members who we've actually reached out to and provided some information when they. So if you could forward that information, because it might already be that we've communicated with them, but if not, we'll make sure that we are.
Yeah.
And it is something that we can add on to a future agenda, we'd be certainly happy to do that, but.
Well, I, I, I want the information so that it's something you can send to me, I.
All of us.
Yeah.
We can certainly put it, put it down on the, on the sheet and we can put it on a future agenda.
The twenty-nineth round of town hall. For, for persons.
Sarah was going to take that day off the do. So that wasn't, but if any, everybody could respond to that beautiful, it's the preparation to get dates on for interim interview. You might, but you haven't.
I did take it off.
Other than that, there is.
So there's like three dates, yeah? Like, the seventh, thirteenth?
Yep, thirty, the end of the day, four, yeah.
Yeah, not Sunday.
We did do for Saturday, Sarah?
We have stuff on the nineteenth.
That's eight to eleven.
Yeah, that's the topic, but there everything we need to do. Anything for that, yeah.
You, the um, she'll have, have this for you, but it's the same thing other than the two pieces that are missing that we just provided. That draft job description that we all got, so if you read through that, it'll be, the conversation will be faster.
And you could, I mean, you can peruse the board portal, anything that he's having to print out is in the board portal. So I'll have hard copies, it should be in there.
Eight to eleven in person, yeah. At the city.
I just said city.
Level large.
The twenty-eighth, thirtieth. Interview.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright, so we are, um, announcements. Uh, we have some work sessions on October nineteenth at eight AM in the council chambers, public safety school. On November sixth, we have our regular board business meeting at seven PM, council chambers and the public safety and system link. It's been a very wonderful, productive meeting this evening. I appreciate all of the time that we have uh been able to give to this and look forward to our next meeting. And with that, we pause.
Good, we have to go to these.
Alec Angela.